This meeting to order. Hope that everyone can hear me. My name is Bill Moore, I'm your moderator. And welcome to Town Meeting 2022. This time, I'm going to read the warning to everyone, so you all have it. Again, I saw it was transcribed, but if everyone can hear by way of voice. The legal voters of the town of Brandon, Vermont are hereby notified and warned to convene remotely on Monday, February 28, 2022, at 7:00 PM. To transact the following business through the following virtual connections. You guys have gotten here by way of your virtual connections. So I won't go through that. And we have three different things on our warning. But before I get into our warning and the reading of the rest of that, I want to let you know that this is your opportunity to participate in democracy. I want to thank you guys for showing up. If you wish to ask a question, there'll be an opportunity for a question asking. We can hear a presentation by the select board. And then we'll have an opportunity to bring up other business. And then we'll adjourn for our recess for Australian ballot, which is tomorrow. A lot of people have already had their ballots mailed to them and mailed back. But we'll have the opportunity to convene at the polls tomorrow for folks that hadn't had an opportunity to vote or to vote on ballots that weren't voted mailed to them, including the school ballot. If you did not request a school ballot, you not receive one, you can vote tomorrow in Brandon from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the American Legion. I just want to start off too by reminding you all that we're all friends and neighbors. There's 4,129 of us that live in this town, and we have to see each other, the same cast of characters over and again. So let's be kind. And remember that you're going to see everybody at the grocery store, at the post office, on the streets, walking around at a summer concert. And just keep that in mind as we ask questions. If you want to ask a question of anybody, any of the select board in this meeting or any of the town officials, you can send me a message, I can ask it for you, or you can use the raise hand function to ask a question. If you happen to be on a, I don't have any phone call folks in, but you happen to be one of those people that called in over teleconference, your telephone, if you hit star six to unmute and star nine to raise your hand, if you want to raise a hand, raise a question, I'll call on you. So with that being said, all that out of the way, I'll move on to Article One to hear a presentation by the Select Board of its Recommended Budget for Fiscal Year 2022 to 2023. This budget and appropriations will be voted by Australian ballot on March 1, 2022 at the Brandon American Legion, Post Number 55, at 550 Franklin Street, Brandon, Vermont, between the hours of 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. With this, I will hand control over to the Chair of the Select Board, Mr. Seth Hopkins.
Thank you, Bill. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
All right. So thank you all for being here tonight. We're looking forward to conducting the little bit of business that we're allowed to do on Zoom. And then, of course, most of it will happen tomorrow. The preliminaries, though, are always pleasant. We always take a moment to recognize the people to whom we've dedicated this year's Book of Town Reports. So this year, the Select Board took the opportunity to dedicate the Town Report to the Brandon Police Department. That's on the inside front cover of your Town Report book. And that includes all of the officers who have served and are presently serving, as well as the past and current leadership in particular. This was a transitional year for the Brandon Police Department. Our longtime chief, Chris Burkell, took another position at the Vermont Police Academy after serving us very well for a long time. Lieutenant Rod Pulsifer ended his career here at the Brandon Police Department after, again, a long and useful service to the town, and he has retired. He will still be with us in a part-time capacity, which we are very appreciative of. And to welcome our new police chief, David Kachajian, who is poised to lead the department in its next iteration. So we wanted to recognize all of the men and women of the department who have served in the past, and in particular, these three leaders. I know that we didn't, we didn't really check with them to see if anybody wanted to say a few words, but I saw a few of them have checked in. So if anybody who is a serving officer or a past officer or any of these three leaders is on the call and would like to say, share any comments, they could let the moderator know by using the raise hand function or raising their hand so that Bill can see them. So that's an opportunity. I did have, while that's happening possibly, I did have a note from Police Chief, retired former Police Chief Chris Burkell, saying that he felt it was heartwarming to see recognition for the department and its members, and welcome to the new chief. He has felt fortunate to have worked for the town of Brandon. And I'm sure that I can express the sentiment of the board and the community by saying that we've all felt fortunate to have worked with Chief Burkell also. So, Mr. Moderator, do you see any hands raised to make comment from any of the police officers who are here? I know that there are at least two or three.
I think that maybe I'm going to ask, I'm going to send an asked unmute function to one of them that I thought maybe wanted to speak, but maybe not. So I don't want to call anybody out, be there.
Okay.
He's on. Former Chief Burkell.
Great, thanks.
Good evening, and thank you, Select Board Chair. This is, I'm trying to figure out how to work off a different device that I'm not used to working off of. But I think it's very nice that the town and the Select Board recognize the Police Department for the work that they're doing and the amount of work that it's been dealing with, given COVID and all the other activities that are going on and the staffing issues that are going on in law enforcement today. So for whatever it's worth, I want to thank the Select Board and the Town Manager for recognizing the Police Department and the work that they have ahead of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris. So with that, I don't see anybody else stepping up and asking to speak from the former or current police. So at this point, again, it's the Select Board's presentation time.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, thanks, everybody. This is the main piece of the meeting tonight is the Select Board presentation about the budget, and we're going to do it in a few parts. We'll discuss the proposed budget for the upcoming year. There is a change this year that we're recommending in terms of funding the paving activity of the town. And we'll present some information about the financial picture. The board, and then we'll take questions and answers that the Town Moderator will facilitate that period. I did want to highlight that all members of the board have been great contributors. Tim Giles and Mike Markowski, Tracy Wyman, Brian Coolidge, and also the town staff, of course, the Town Manager, Dave Atherton, and our town staff, Elaine Smith and Jackie Savella in the finance kind of area, and our Town Clerk and Treasurer, Sue Gage, and Assistant Town Clerk, Luanne Merkert. And the participation of the Budget Committee is always really valuable to us as we get more people to consider the work that the town needs to do to provide necessary services. And the Budget Committee has been this year Barry Varian, Jan Coolidge, Peter Werner, Neil Sillins, and Doug Bailey, and we do appreciate all of them. So I have the first couple of slides for the presentation. It's a little bit of a historical kind of look back the last several years. The top chart you can see is the town tax rate. And over the last five years or so, you can see that we're kind of hovering between 76 cents and 80 cents, more or less. It's a fairly stable tax rate. I wouldn't quite call it flat, but it's about as close to flat as we can get. The major change in the two charts there is highlighted with the red arrows, the townwide reappraisal. That did result in a lower tax rate a couple of years ago because the grand list was corrected. And so the grand list, kind of getting everybody on an equitable basis and actual market value of their assessments, that rose enough that the town tax rate went down. And this year, you'll see from the slides that Mr. Giles will present that it's pretty stable in terms of spending. And so the tax rate should be also pretty stable again this year. This slide, again, is a little bit of a look back before we get into the proposed budget. And here, the major event was COVID. So the years that are listed along there, those should not be understood to be calendar years, but rather fiscal years. So they end June 30th of the year that's indicated. So we remember that COVID started in March of 2020. And so that's where you'll see all of a sudden, Mr. Atherton had done incredible work over the previous six or so years driving down the delinquent taxes that were carried on the town's books. And all of a sudden, we did have a spike in folks who were unable to pay their taxes. I would point out that there have been a couple of different programs, one after another with the same name. They were called the Areridge Assistance Program, Number One and Number Two. And they were basically during the year 2020 and then during 2021. Those have ended as of October. It's certainly not the Select Board's desire that people would be delinquent in their taxes because it does represent a liability to the town and to the rest of the taxpayers to carry that along. But the Select Board did waive penalties and fees for property taxes and wastewater accounts for the entire duration of the Vermont Declared State of Emergency. And that too has ended as of the middle of June of this past year. So if you're one of those folks that's got some arerages in their taxes or in their wastewater or your water bill, or there's still a number of programs available. I just wanted to highlight those for folks. So if you're a homeowner, you can use the Vermont Homeowner Assistance Program. That will help you out with property tax arerage. If you're behind with your wastewater account or your water account with the Fire District, you can go through the Vermont Household Water Assistance Program. And I would point out that there are also programs in place for renters. And a good place to start with any of those things would be to talk to the State of Vermont Department of Economic Services. You could also talk to Green Mountain Power, who has programs in place if you're behind on your electricity bills. So there is still aid available, and we would encourage folks to take advantage of it. Despite some outreach from the town and an awful lot of outreach from the State of Vermont, it has pretty determined that not as many folks took advantage of this available assistance as might be hoped. And so you'll see that that spike during COVID has come down some, and we appreciate people making it a priority to meet their obligation to pay their property taxes. It's the Select Board's goal always to try to provide the town's needed services at the lowest possible amount of taxation. I'll now turn it over to Selectman Tim Giles, who will talk about the budget portion of the slides.
Hello. This is a great year to be talking budgets because we have a great budget this year. This first slide is meant to remind you how the town budget fits into your overall property tax bill. It's fairly consistent year to year. This one happens to be the current fiscal year. And you can see that the bulk of our taxes go to pay for our schools, and 34% goes to pay for town items. We have 4% going to the Fire District, and 4% are appropriations that you as the voters decide each year about what we'll tax ourselves to support. Next slide, Seth. And so this is that very same amount of information, but based on an average home. Our very capable Town Clerk, Sue Gage, tells us that the average home valuation in Brandon is $180,000. And so if we take that $180,000 tax bill and split it up into dollars by the percentages that you saw on the previous screen, you see that about $2,500 goes to schools and about 1,430 goes to the town. About 155 goes to the Fire District, appropriations 154. And the exempt are properties that don't pay taxes because we've decided that they are of value to our community. Whether it's an economic value, when we try to stabilize taxes for businesses that want to come and prosper in Brandon, or whether it's, you know, other kinds of benefits that the town brings or people that we want to help with their taxes. Veterans are allowed to have some of their property be exempt. And so that's a very small slice of our pie. I'll note that on this slide, it does show that this year's budget is actually down. And the amount to be raised by taxes is even down further. And you say, how can our budget be going down when it seems like prices are going up everywhere? And I would say that this is a time to, as Seth said a moment ago, to realize we have a well-managed town. Our Town Manager, Dave Atherton, does a great job at keeping things efficient and frugal. He's supported by a great staff that keeps track of the dollars and makes sure that we aren't wasting money. We have a great road crew that is efficient in taking care of our roads and our Police Department, our Water and Sewer Department. And of course, you know, our Select Board meetings are meant to make sure that we're staying on track and that we're not wasting any money. And the great news this year is that we're actually going to be asking for less money. It may come a time in the future when we come to you and ask for more money, if we need more. But it's certainly great to be coming to you this year when costs are going up and say that we're asking for less. Next slide. And so now diving down into the town's portion of the tax bill that you get. This is the town's portion, broken out into percentages. And you can see that the Highway and the Police are where we spend most of our money in our town. And the other departments that I'll go through briefly, just so you're sure you understand, the Clerk is Sue Gage's office. The code is Jeff Biasuzzi and his code work. We have an assessor that keeps track of the grand list and changes that we need, and there's a certain amount of money we spend on that every year. Administration is Dave Atherton's office. Buildings and Grounds is B and G. Economic Development is Bill Moore and the work he does to help our economy prosper here in Brandon. Our debt load, which is 8% of our budget, is actually relatively low compared to other communities our size. And so we're actually in pretty good shape that way. And we're keeping up with paying things off, and so that's great. Our REC stands for Recreation Department, which is another area that Bill Moore oversees. And then our INCH and other governments are what we call partner agencies. And INCH stands for insurance. The majority of that category is we pay VLCT for insurance for our town. And other government agencies include things like the Brandon Mosquito District, which now has a new name. Seth, maybe you can remind me what we're calling Otter Creek?
Otter Creek Watershed Insect Control, right.
Thank you, thank you. It's nice to get that on the tip of our tongues because that's going to be the way we refer to it now. And so that's our budget by percentages, which we came up with, and that's the proposed budget for this year. It's relatively stable. I mean, year to year, these are approximately the size of the pie chart that you see. Seth, if you go to the next slide, you'll now see the dollar amounts, again, based on the average $180,000 home. This just gives you a way to kind of ground yourself in the sense of how much money, when you write out your property tax check each, either quarter or each year, kind of how much money is going to different things. I don't need to read them to you, so you can see them. But this gives you a feel for how money is spent in our community. I think we're lucky to live in a great community that works together as a team. And I think we're well-run and frugal. And so I'm glad to bring this budget proposal to you this year. And now I'll turn it over to Mike Markowski.
Good evening, thank you. So there's a couple of slides to read through here. Let me, hold on, let me get the view back. I lost the screen, hold on. Okay. All right. So for the funding for road paving this year, last year, the voters approved $100,000 for paving in the standalone article. The town will not request this year. Paying our article this year, so $100,000 operating budget. This year, the board proposes to fund paving through an increase in the paving line of the highway budget from $70,000 to $100,000. And some of our local option tax funds revenue will be used for that. So the town has applied for the grant to repave Arnold District Road north of the Hollow Road. Seth, thank you. And then a 1% local option tax review would update for everybody as the board proposed and the board voters adopted at a special meeting in 2015. 1% tax added to the sales, meals, rooms, and alcohol within Brandon. Restricted to Select Board use for capital projects, including paving. So the local option tax funds, they can be found in page 34 of this year's book. Revenue and interest from 2015 to 2021 would be $844,782. The segment six matches were $470,636. The town bought a backhoe for $123,900. And the revenue interest since 6/30/21 is $131,238. So that leaves us with a balance of $381,484 as of now. So this is kind of a chart as to where we stand with our local options tax, I believe. If you can clarify this slide a little bit more for me.
This is not the local option tax, but the separate unrestricted reserve fund, right? So this is in addition to the local option tax.
All right. And then, as you guys can see here, the, so this is a Select Board fund balance policy. It's a reserve fund from 15% to 30% of our budget. And it equals out to be $487,500 to $975,000. And as of 6/30, it shows $689,145. And again, the town labor agreements here, the non-uniformed staff, there's 16 employees that fall under that. Personnel policy was updated in 2019. Who in the union, three-year contracts renewed in 2021. And the NEB, NEB, EBA union, there is five employees with three-year contracts renewed in 21. The health insurance, you know, all employees have moved from Blue Cross Platinum to MVP Gold. They contribute 10% of their premium. And they'll be contributing 15% in 2022. And I think that covers that. I'll turn it back over to Seth. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mike. So this slide just reminds you of when the Select Board does its regular business meetings. Generally, we meet the second and fourth Mondays of each month at 7:00. We meet in the basement of the Town Hall, not the Town Office, but the Town Hall at One Conant Square. And since we started meeting in person again, we have had the facility that you can attend the meeting in person, or you can attend by phone, or you can attend by Zoom. And those meeting agendas and instructions and so forth are all posted on the town's website on the Friday before the Monday meeting. And at the top of the page, where Elaine Smith posts those agendas, you'll see the instructions for how to participate by Zoom or by phone. And of course, you can attend in person. And at this time, I'll turn it back to Mr. Moore for the question and answer time.
Thank you, Seth Hopkins, and thank you for your presentation. So now, this is the time. If you have any questions for the Select Board, now is your time to ask them. I'll sit here awkwardly for a minute or two while we wait for questions to come through. Again, if you want to ask a question, I see a raised hand, just fantastic. And see if I can actually get to who's raised a hand. It's somebody that I'm going to unmute you and then ask you, identify who you are, just for our recording sake, and have an opportunity to ask a question. And I'll try to find the right person to answer your question. We'll call on them, you have an opportunity for follow-up. And then that will be the bit of your exchange until everyone else has had an opportunity, then we can ask a second question. So a person by the name, it's just listed here, is Lund. I'm going to ask you to unmute, and if you could just tell us who you are and ask your question.
Sure, this is Craig Lund. And my question is, why are we exempting properties that are businesses that are not ADA approved?
Craig Lund. And your question was, why are we not, why are we exempting properties or providing tax exemption for properties that are not ADA compliant? Is that the question? Okay. Who would like to answer a question? Maybe I'll start with our Select Board Chair and see if he...
Sure, I'll take a run at it. Thank you, Mr. Lund, for the question. So in the Town Report book, on page 32, are the list of the exempted properties down at the bottom of the page. And the properties that were voted exemptions and the properties, that those would be voted by the town at the town meetings of previous years. The properties with tax stabilization would have some of the value of their property exempt from taxation. And that's through Select Board action. The tax stabilization is set up so that when someone comes in and buys a property, we allow them to continue to pay taxes on the value of the property as it was when they bought it and before they improve it. So the idea is that the improvement will be a good investment in the town, and eventually, we will tax the full value of the property when the stabilization period ends. As far as the actual point of the question regarding ADA compliance, the voters certainly don't have any restrictions on who they can exempt for properties. It's just the will of the voters of the town. As far as what the Select Board does with the tax stabilization properties, I'm not sure which of the categories you're really referring to specifically or which particular property. But as far as what the Select Board does, the tax stabilization policy also has not made it a requirement that there be ADA compliance. If that's something that you feel about, we certainly could consider it as the board. We could talk with Mr. Moore, our Economic Development Officer, and see about making a revision to the tax stabilization policy that would require that to be eligible for tax stabilization, the property would have to be brought into compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. This is why Town Meeting is valuable. There are considerations that come to the board that maybe the board has not thought of or that have come to policymakers, like our Economic Development Officer, that maybe... I'm not sure whether we're using the model bill. I think, I think we're using a VLCT model for the tax stabilization policy. That's what our usual practice is, Mr. Lund, is to try to find a model policy that the League of Cities and Towns in Vermont has developed and vetted with their staff of attorneys and so forth. But I do fully appreciate the suggestion, and I would hope that the board would incorporate that suggestion into some future consideration about revising those policies. If there's a particular property in mind, I'm unaware of it. But we would be happy to hear more from you about this, either at a board meeting or if you wanted to send us an email or give any of us a phone call or see the Town Manager or Mr. Moore, the Economic Development Officer.
Thank you, Seth. And sort of balances before I ask you for your follow-up. I'm also, not only your moderator, but we're Economic Development Officer, and that's certainly something that could be considered, and it would be a few strokes of the pen to incorporate it as long with the Select Board's will, to make that a part of the policy going forward if there are any of those properties that have economic development tax stabilization. As far as the other exemptions, that's, again, the will of the voters. As far as the, the other exemptions, that's again, the will of the voters. Do you have a follow-up, Mr. Lund?
Well, just quickly, I mean, I know of two properties, the Smith Block and the Briggs Carriage House that are monetarily or financially profitable for the owners. I don't understand why they should be exempt. The ADA thing is just kind of a pet peeve of mine that neither one of those properties are ADA compliant. I don't understand why, why the taxpayers of Brandon should foot the bill for other people.
Okay, well, thank you all. Again, thank you for expressing that. Any other follow-ups from select board before we move on to another question? The select board does meet the second and fourth Mondays of every month. They have the opportunity to address needs at that time as well for folks.
I might just offer, by way of a follow-up, to answer that follow-up, that the, the folks who receive the tax stabilization, since it sounds like that might be more the category that you're focused on with your question or your concern. The properties that receive tax stabilization, they are taxed at, they're fully taxed at the value of the property as it was assessed when they bought the property. So if the previous owner had just hung on to the property and done nothing, that was the fully assessed value of that property, and that's what that previous owner would have paid. The new owner pays taxes on that value, even though they've taken out paperwork and advised the town that they're going to invest a substantial amount of money. The way that the stabilization works is if you invest a small amount of money, you pay the, you pay taxes on the lower assessment for a shorter length of time. In some cases, it's only a year or two. So the town is just postponing collecting taxes on the higher value. It's not collecting any less taxes than it was on the property when it was unimproved and owned by the previous owner. If you invest a significant amount of money, you can see that in the town report book, the Smith Block's value is, you know, that's a million bucks plus that was invested in the property. And so they will receive a longer tax stabilization. They'll receive a longer period of time to pay at the old assessment. But they will eventually pay at the full assessment once their tax stabilization period is completed.
Thank you, Seth. Any other questions? I haven't seen anybody raise their hand or send me a message by way of the chat. Give it another minute or so to percolate.
And it was, it was just brought to my attention that the town only stabilizes the municipal part, the town part of the tax bill. So those properties do pay their full school tax.
Just another minute and a half of awkward silence. So just hold on to it. I have a question in the chat from listed as Jesse Tharian. Could you please recap the paving priorities again? That part of the presentation was a bit broken up.
Yeah, I apologize. Mike's audio connection wasn't super great for part of the time that he was doing the slides. So in turn, I think the question was about priorities, though, right, Bill?
Yes.
Priorities, I wonder if the town manager would like to talk about priorities. The only priority I'm aware of is that the town manager applied for the state paving assistance for the Arnold District Road north of Hollow Road to the Leicester Town Line. But Dave may have had further discussions with the Highway Foreman Sean Erickson about other paving that they have in mind for the year.
Sure. So, yeah, we're looking at, well, we did a, we did a Class Two paving grant with V-Trans to pave Arnold District Road from, from just about Hollow Road to the town line. That's money that's, that comes through with a state of about $200,000 for shim and overlay, and we cover the, we have a 20% match on that. So which I'm assuming are, we're, the board's going to use the 20% to come out of the local option tax for paving there. We're looking at doing a rebuild on, we're going to start rebuilding Town Farm Road. We're looking at doing three tenths of a mile there. As many of you know, that road is severely rutted. It needs to be reditched. So we're going to start doing sections at a time. Hopefully, we can continue to pay for and house with, with local option tax again, and that's going to be rebasing with gravel, new culverts, new ditches, and new, new ride course and pavement, too. Couple smaller ones. Kind of drawn a blank. I think we're looking at possibly doing some work on Paint Works Road. And I think that's it this year. Arnold District and Town Farm were the real big ones that we're looking at fixing this year. We have a, we have a box cover we're going to be doing on Arnold District Road as well. So that's something that we also got grant funding for a year ago. So we'll continue working on that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Afferton. And at this time, we do have a raised hand. The person I'm going to ask you to mute, if you can just say your name, because sometimes people don't change, change it over when you get grandma's iPhone and stuff like that on there. So like, if you just say your name as, before you ask your question for recording sake, I'm going to ask you to unmute. This, the person is Stuart Hall. You're going to get a request to unmute.
Hi, this is actually Robin Paul. My question is, is there anybody that can speak to the one of the articles that refers to the Brandon Area Rescue Squad? I noticed the historical data, their request is around 28,000. And this year, the article says that they're requesting 82,000 and some change. So I didn't know if there's anybody that can speak to that increase.
So the, the, thank you, Ms. Hall. There. So the question was about the appropriation, which is something that's placed by the, by the voters or the select board, but with petitions voters. And so there's a question about the Brandon Area Rescue Squad and the increase. Is there somebody on the call that would like to field that call from the Brandon Area Rescue Squad or has information about that? If you could raise your hand, that'd be fantastic. Still looking, looking for raised hands? So we, okay, Mr. Mr. Giles asked for an unmute. So Mr. Giles?
Yes, I have permission. Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that on page 44, we get their report, and that's really the extent of what we have when it comes to supporting their requests for appropriation. And so that's probably the best place to go to look for information. They do have an email address and a phone number if you have questions. So I might suggest that.
Thank you, Mr. Giles. And I also have a message from our town clerk and treasurer, Susan Gage, who I'm going to ask to unmute.
Hi there. I do know a little bit about it. I know that they have had difficulty keeping volunteers. It's been a volunteer squad pretty much. And they need to start paying people, and their budget is pretty tight. And so I think they're just struggling financially, and that's why the big increase. They all sat down with me early in the year. I looked into different towns, and a lot of different towns actually fund them with a tax like we do the Fire District. We've never done that with the ambulance before, because it's always been all volunteer. So there, they decided to try to ask for more money in an appropriation rather than try to create a municipal, an additional municipal tax. But they're definitely going through some tough financial times and some hard times finding volunteers. And that's about all I know, because I'm not more involved in that, but I did sit down with them. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Thank you, Sue. Do you have a follow-up, Ms. Hall? I can ask you to unmute if you have a follow-up.
Yeah, thank you, Sue. That's a lot of information that the article in the report did not give. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Our next question, I'm going to go to Mr. Doug Bailey, a member of the Budget Committee and a member of the public. Doug, you're on. Oh, you went on. I'm going to ask you to unmute again. One more time. All right, I'm going to hit, you'll see the Ask Unmute button. There you go. You are, you are now not muted. Doug, your, your microphone seems not to be working. It shows that you are not muted, but the mic, oh, how's that? No, still can't hear you, Doug. Well, while, yeah, still not hearing you. If you could either type your message in, I'm going to, I'm going to move on to another question. And if you get your mic back on, we'll get you backed up, okay? So moving on to, I'm going to unmute. If I can. Zoe Armal, if you can just say your name and your question, that'd be fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome. Thank you, Bill. So good evening, everybody. My name is Zoe Armal. I'm a relatively new resident. We moved here to Brandon about a year ago. Been loving it so far. I was just curious, you know, as, as young professionals that are looking to start a family. I remember that the governor was talking about how they were going to address, you know, some of the, some of the financial issues that Vermonters were tackling in terms of affordable housing and childcare, and that they were going to, you know, select a budget for that. I was just curious, has Brandon applied to any of those funds, or are they going to give any of those funds to the towns? And what would that look like potentially?
Thank you, Zoe, and welcome to Brandon. Appreciate having young people here. So I think probably the most appropriate person to start with potentially would be one of our reps. And since you showed up first, I'm going to ask Representative Jerome to unmute and provide some more information about that.
Zoe, thank you. Welcome to Brandon. I can give you a little update and sort of tell you that this is a work in progress. Last legislative session, H171 was passed, and that was our major at childcare bill. And so we're working through a lot of childcare issues at the moment with the hopes that we'll be expanding childcare centers, providing, in fact, I have a bill in legislature now to provide more funding and business development and technical assistance for childcare centers. So we're hoping to be able to provide money for that, to build more childcare centers, develop more of the employee infrastructure that needs to happen in order to get more centers going, more training, buy more scholarships and education for, for the childcare profession. And then also, one of the major goals of H171 is that we don't want any family to pay more than 10% of their income towards childcare. And it is not uncommon across the state that a family might pay $20,000 a year per child for childcare, which is an unfathomable amount of money, but and it, of course, makes everything very difficult. So that's, we're working on childcare. Housing is a major legislative issue, and we are putting funds, some of the ARPA funds and general general funds into housing, and it's across the spectrum to, not only for people who are not housed, but really focusing on the middle income sort of starter homes. And so I think that there is I think two numbers that I keep hearing are 25 million and 50 million. So there's a significant amount of money that's going towards that because it hasn't been economically, there hasn't been a much economic incentive to build those sort of middle income homes across the state. So just want you to know that it, we're working on it. It's a legislative priority. There are you know, towns are working on this. I'm not exactly sure exactly where Brandon is as far as applying for those grants, but I don't think they've even come out really yet. So we're, it's, it is in discussion. There was some work done last legislative session, and more work is being done now. And childcare and housing are clear priorities for the state across the board. So thank you. Perhaps Butch Shaw, Representative Shaw has more to add on that?
He was my next click. Representative Shaw?
May I speak to the Assembly, Mr. Moderator?
Absolutely.
I have to ask that question, right? So Stephanie did a great job answering the question. However, I just want to add on just a little bit to that. A couple of weeks ago, the House passed out H510, which was a Vermont childcare tax credit bill. The, the overarching details of the bill, we wrote it up. Allow families to apply for children six and under for a tax care credit of up to $1,200 a year to, to help families with their childcare issues that they, they may need some help. The bill, the, the total cost of that bill was 48.48 to 49.1 million dollars. The bill now is, has been sent, it passed out of the House, not unanimously, but it did pass out of the House. And it's now in, in the Senate. I suspect it's in Senate finance for their actually, for their approval or not. So we are working on those types of things. This is a program that's designed to be available to most Vermonters. The income limits on this, you could apply if you make $200,000 per household per year for this particular task tax credit. Or with some other math, you can make up to $233,000 a year and still apply for, for the tax credit. So the, the details are being worked out. The funding is, is, is being sought. And we'll know more about that probably right at the end of the session before that bill comes back to the House, because we're, I'm sure the Senate will massage it and put their own stamp on the bill when they're, when they're done with it. So we'll see that bill back and forth again. Where, where it will go, the is, is, is going to be the issue. I think the details are worked out well, and the bill, the Senate won't do, do fool those details, but they will fool the amounts. So we look forward to seeing that bill coming back from the Senate. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Representative Shaw. And Zoe sent a message to me. She's giving thanks for answering, and much appreciate of you guys both stepping up to answer the question. I'm looking for more questions. I'm going to try to unmute you again, Doug. Let's hope it works. Fingers crossed. All right. So I've sent the Ask Unmute button. So you're going to click your unmute if you can, okay? Can't hear you, Doug. Why don't you try shutting off your video to see if maybe that might be a bandwidth issue potentially? As a suggestion, if you're having problems with your audio, that potentially shutting off your video one might As a suggestion, if you're having problems with your audio, that potentially shutting off your video will might make it easier. Suggestion from one of our fantastic constituents, Annie Schrattin. Doug, are you there? Okay. Sorry that the technology is not working for you, Doug, but if you wanted to send it by way of chat, I could certainly read it out for you if you'd like. Any other questions before we move on in our meeting? Last call for questions. Well, we'll, we'll keep it kind of loose in case if someone happens to feel a little more bold as we get further down the way, but we have essentially one more section. And our article, and we're gonna move on from Article 1 to Article 2, to transact any other business property done when met. At this time, I do have a request. Sort of stepped on it already by calling them before, but I'm gonna ask Representatives Jerome and Shaw to unmute. And I'm going to start with Stephanie and we'll end with Butch, if that's okay? And, oh, Doug has, Doug has sent on before, Doug said, says he just wanted to thank Seth and Tim for their work on the town report. So Doug and Seth, I'm sorry, Tim and Seth, kudos from Doug Bailey, who knows a little bit about, I think he maybe used to be a selectman here in town. I'm not quite sure. But, so he says, thank you. With that, I'm gonna ask Representative Jerome to unmute and then I'll ask Representative Shaw.
Okay. Thank you. So let me just start off by saying that it has been an absolute pleasure to represent Brandon in the General Assembly. And it's hard to believe that it has been halfway through, we're halfway through the legislative session. We started our first two weeks in remote, in, in January, our first two weeks were spent working remotely. And then in mid-January, it was, it was decided that we could come in and work in a hybrid mode. And for the most part, probably about 75% of us have been in the State House, working in our committees, in, on legislative floor, mass on. Our witnesses have been on, on video screens. And so it's sort of this surreal sort of sci-fi way of doing business and it's been, but it's worked out. We've definitely passed some great legislation. Butch noted H 510, which provides the $100 per child tax credit, which would be a big help to young families. And there has been quite a bit of good legislation been passed to date. So I wanted to just talk about some of the legislative priorities and then, then discuss the work that I've been doing in the State House. So our current legislative priorities are, the first one is very important, that we're, is focusing on investing the federal stimulus funds in a wise way so that we will recover post-COVID and put us on a strong, sound footing for the future. And we are all, all of us working in the legislature are cognizant of these funds and want to make sure that nothing is wasted and that we are making permanent and lasting change. And then the second thing is sort of its list of priorities that we're, we're tackling the issues of housing and childcare, which we discussed. Workforce development, climate change, pensions, mental health, substance use disorder, healthcare access, broadband and cell phone coverage. So a lot of really important issues. I serve on the Commerce Committee, the Commerce and Economic Development Committee, and I am the ranking member. And you may have heard early in the legislative session that workforce development is a priority, not only of the governor, but of, of the legislature. And we are all working together on trying to make a really sound bill on, in tackling many different facets of workforce and workforce retention. So according to, and we're working on a bill, it's H 703. If you ever want to follow along and see what kind of work we're doing in the legislature, you can also go to the General Assembly's website and type in H 703 and see what we're doing. So according to The State Economist, prior to COVID-19, the pandemic, there were 20, it is created, the COVID-19 crisis has created 25,000 less workers in the state of Vermont than before the pandemic. Now, prior to COVID, this was an issue. We knew of the aging population, but it really didn't result in this crisis. And, but there now post sort of pandemic, there are many reasons for, for this workforce shortage. Has been retirements, ongoing childcare issues, health and safety concerns. Higher pay, the higher hourly wage has made it so people, it's less necessary to have any one or two extra part-time jobs. And then there is a really high number, so surprisingly, a high number of new business startups. And of course, housing is this sort of permeates everything. So and in H 703, let me just go through the major points that we're working on. The first is these critical workforce shortages, and we're typically looking at healthcare workforce and nursing. And we are, want to support and increase the number of nurses that are able to get trained. We need to double the number of nurses getting educated in the state of Vermont in order to meet that need. So we're supporting funding of Vermont colleges and universities to increase the size of all of their nursing schools and the number of nursing students they can educate. We're expanding our loans and scholarships. And pivotal to all of this is making sure we have enough nurse educators. Nurse educators earn typically about half as much as a floor nurse will earn. And so we're trying to figure out, and there's so many vacancies as a result of that. We're, we demand a master's or a PhD in nursing for a nurse educator. And so we need to figure out a way to supplement those nursing, those salaries in order to draw more people into the state to take over those faculty positions or increase them from our own pool of well-educated nurses. We are also looking at, the second thing we're looking at is expanding our labor force. Looking at funds for internships and, and apprenticeships. Looking at efforts to remove workforce barriers and such as the benefit, benefit cliffs for retirees and those with disabilities or justice-involved individuals. We want to connect graduates of Vermont Public and Private Universities and Colleges to our entry-level jobs in states. So these, these universities and colleges have done a lot of work attracting students to Vermont. So we want them to stay. So we can just off that number who are staying and getting early jobs in Vermont, start their careers here. I think we're better off. And then encouraging businesses to take on those young graduates and maybe a slight risk or because they're not as experienced, but they can fill those entry-level jobs. And encouraging in migration to the state as well as resettlement of refugees. We're also looking at the funding of career pathways such, and then loans and scholarships from Vermont State Colleges, CCV, VTC, UVM, and also the trade schools and apprenticeships. And looking particularly into green economy and climate workforce as well as our critical occupations in healthcare, technology, advanced manufacturing, business administration and skilled trades. Fourth thing we're looking at is strengthening our career and technical education centers, both for adults and students. 3,000 students every year graduate high school without a career, without a path that they know what they're going, what their plan is post-graduation. They're not entering the military. They don't have a job they're aspiring to and they don't have skills or extra certifications that they are trying to achieve or are not getting an extra degree. So we need to look at that population and entice them to get more education and certifications and, and extra so search for certifications and trades and skills. And also looking to help adults get better skills and, you know, then transition to higher wages. And last legislative session, we had a very successful program where we offered two courses per person in, at UVM or VTC or CCV in, to sort of, to get additional certification. And those, those, those courses were grabbed in a record rate. And so we know there's a desire for Vermonters who can't necessarily afford to, to get these extra skills, but they want them. So we, we're gonna do that again. And then we're also looking at the funding system for career technical education. The current funding system is, is a disincentive for people, for schools to encourage sending to, to, to career technical education centers. So looking at sort of various ways that this can be done. Also looking at maybe a, a postgraduate course at, at a career technical education center. And I also want to increase the investments to upgrade their facilities and course offerings. And then we want to look at funding for organizations to create job coaching, career guidance, and career skill and counseling in six regions of the state, and the Rotten region would be one of those. So we're sort of fine tuning on what that would look like, but a center where people could help look at their, their path forward. And then lastly, we're looking at ways to help our creative economy businesses get a stronger footing post-COVID-19. After all this, we'll be looking at the Senate Omnibus Economic Development Bill when we go back in March and try to mesh it to and make sure that we can make a stronger economy that will work for all of us. So I am happy to answer more questions. I'm also gonna put my town meeting report, which talks about eight or 10 different areas that are really important to the state and that different committees are working on, in the, in the chat, so you can have that. And it'll also be on my website and I'll, I'll post it in Front Porch Forum too. So anyway, there's, there's a lot going on. It's a very exciting time to be a member of the legislature and I really believe that we are doing a lot of good. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Jerome. Representative Shaw, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you again for allowing me to speak to the folks in Brandon. For those of you who are new, and I know we have at least one. Just to introduce myself, I was, I live in Pittsburgh and I was appointed by Governor Douglas to fill out the term for Senator Peg Florey when she was elevated to the Senate in 2009, and I was seated in the House in 2010. I served my first 11 years there on the House Corrections Institution Committee. And my last, and served six years as the Vice Chair on that committee. And then the last two years, I've been serving on the House Transportation Committee and now currently serving as its Vice Chair. Many of you know, I'm kind of a numbers wonk, so my, my focus is going to be around budgeting and numbers and, and all of that. Stephanie does a great job with the, with the policy piece and she really keeps me informed, but I get, I get myself buried in the numbers. And I'd like to start by saying, first of all, we see in Vermont a very rosy picture painted about the amount of money that the state of Vermont has. And some of those reports are true. We received COVID relief funds. We received American Rescue Plan funds. And just recently, we've, we've received or will be receiving $1.7 billion in the Federal Infrastructure and Investment and Jobs Act, which was a bipartisan act to improve the infrastructure throughout the country, highway, railroad, airlines, bridges and in-town highways. And then the, the total of that bill was about 2.2 billion. So between the 1.7 and the 2.2, that's where we're going to see the window for broadband, which I know is near and dear to, to built to your heart. So and, and, but these funds are to be spent over a five-year period. On a more local level, I just would like to remind folks how important the Vermont Police Academy is down in Pittsburgh. It's a pretty significant piece of economic driver for northern, northern Rotten County. And we just finished, the state has just finished a project down there and investing $1.7 million in, in renovation of a dormitory to get more folks in there. And that's an important thing for our district to have those, those folks in our district. And they've also appropriated $50,000 to create a master plan for the next five years at the academy. And we're looking forward to some exciting renovations and new buildings down at that facility. So that'll be really good for all the folks in the district. As, as, as we know, Route 7 has been a, a constant project under construction everywhere. And just in the last year or so, the state's invested about $20 million in, in Route 7 upgrades. And along with the town of Brandon, Segment 6 was a total project, so about 28 million. We've received close to $50 million so far. We're scheduled for another 32 million in, in the out years, hopefully within the next three or four years. And, and just, this is just for the town manager because every time I speak to him, he, he pings me about more funding for town, town highways and town grant highways. And he's just like, like, to know the two years' budget includes $90 million for town highways statewide. So we, we upped that this year by about three or four million dollars. So that, that's a good thing. We, we, we continue to look at projects throughout the county and particularly throughout our region. Bridge projects are important. We just learned that a new bridge program is coming out to make some town bridges, especially our covered bridges eligible for 100% federal funding to repair those bridges. It's a program that is still in the making with the IIJA Act, but we're working on that and it's well-funded. It's coming up. With this federal money that we're about to receive, there's, there's a caveat in, in this money. And while we're receiving our 2023 funding, I'm very excited about what we're going to get. But my, my enthusiasm has been really tempered by the fact that the federal Congress needs to pass a general fund budget. Right now, they're working on a continuing resolution. They just keep spending the same amount of money year after year. They need to pass a new budget to fund the Infrastructure and Investment and Jobs Act going forward. They have enough money to get us started for this fiscal year. After that, if, if we can't pass a budget in Washington, we can't, we can't build roads. It's important. Hopefully they'll, they'll get together down there and do that. The other piece of IIJA is, is it creates a $30 million hole in the transportation budget. That hole is, is created by the matching money that will be required to match the federal funds coming in. And currently, that leaves us a $30 million gap. This, this year's budget, we're, we're okay with. Next year's budget's a $30 million gap, up to a $50 million gap in 2025. So we're looking at ways to close that gap and use state funds judiciously without raising taxes or fees. We're getting there. It's, it's been a fairly painful process, but we're gonna get there. Our Vermont State General Fund Budget is under attack. Our Vermont State General Fund Budget is, well, I can, I'll paraphrase, I'll phrase it this way. When I was talking to a member of the, our House Appropriations Committee Friday afternoon, he looked at me and said, said to me, Butch, if the people of Vermont only knew how broke we are, they would be scared. And the reason, some of the reasons are because our, believe it or not, our revenues are down. They're up to the forecasts, but we lowered the forecast 20% when COVID hit, our income forecast. So we're running with those forecasts, but we're still down at 10 or 15%. And I also heard Friday that our Medicare program is literally broke. So we have to be really, really conscious of what we're doing in Vermont. We have to be careful with our precious state funds that we spend them wisely and make sure that we've taken care of the people of Vermont in a very judicious way. And it's, it's tough. Representative Jerome just spoke of several programs that are just so, so important to the growth of our state. Childcare is one of them. Jobs is another one. Expanding broadband. So we, we're, we're gonna get there, but it's gonna be a painful process. I'd just like to say quickly, just a little bit about redistricting. As many of you know, this is a redistricting year. Every 10 years, we're required to go through redistricting by our state constitution and by federal law to make sure that we have the representatives representing the approximately right amount of people. And currently, Stephanie and I are in two-member district with Brandon, Pittsburgh and Sudbury. This year's redistricting was This year's redistricting was challenging because the committee that does the redistricting usually has about nine months to put the bill together. They, this year, they put the uh bill together in less than nine weeks because of delays in, in the census. So with all that being said, uh, the maps are drawn. Uh, the House has not voted on their version of the map yet, but I suspect we will, we get back next week. And what it appears to be is that Pittsburgh and Sud- and Brandon huh will be separated. And Pittsburgh and Proctor will constitute a single-member district, and Stephanie and Brandon will co- co- constitute a single-member district. Now, leave, leave that for her to comment on. And uh with that, uh, Mr. Moderator, I think I'll close. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Butch, and thank you, Stephanie, um, for your presentations. Um, and you can Google both uh Butch and Stephanie for the best ways to get a hold of them. Um, there's also the legislative website, uh, legislature dot Vermont dot gov, where it has contact information for folks. Um, but they're all very accessible and uh um, yeah, I'm not sure as far as the redistricting goes, you know, if we'll be represented by Representative Shaw and Stephanie together or, but it's very exciting. Keep an eye or an ear to the ground because it'll all be very exciting. Um, with that, there any other business? Remember, we cannot really transact any real business on this meeting. Just announcements, seeing that there is none. I am going to, we're adjourned this meeting. Um, and I again want to warn you guys, make sure that you know that Australia ballot tomorrow, polls open ten to seven PM, the American, Brandon American Legion. You have an opportunity to vote on everything if you haven't already voted. Um, and it's, and particularly, uh, if you would like to vote on the school budget, because unless you request it by way of absentee ballot, you're gonna need to show up at the polls to make sure you vote. So uh, again, get out there, vote. Thank you, guys, for joining us at the meeting. This recording will be posted on our town YouTube uh channel, which everyone loves. Constant, you know, subscribe, you know, give me some clicks, get us some clicks of the town. But I know if you want, our past meetings are there, along with some of the select board meetings, all kinds of stuff that we do around the town. Um, so thank you, guys. Have a good evening. Thank you for participating in democracy. It works. Good night.